Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, July 30, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Dean Engelhoff. The following is a list of legislation that will be held for a pre-agenda and also resolutions to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 1810, Resolution Appointing David C. Bush to Serve as a Member on the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire, October 31, 2022. Bill Number 1814, Resolution Appointing David F. O'Nuffer to Serve as a Member of the Civil Service Commission for a Term to Expire, December 31, 2021. And Bill Number 1893, Resolution Appointing Professor Mary Ann Herman to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2022. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1923, Resolution Appointing Samantha Bushman to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire, March 31, 2021. Bill Number 1924, Resolution Appointing Knowledge Bill Hudson to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire, April 30, 2021. Bill Number 1925, Resolution Appointing Ethel Johnson to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire, April 30, 2020. Bill Number 1926, Resolution Reappointing Mark Masterson to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire, April 30, 2020. Bill Number 1927, Resolution Appointing Megan Winters to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire, April 30, 2020. And Bill Number 1928, Communication from Jennifer Olzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on Behalf of the Department of City Planning for Andrew Dash and Shereen Abdul-Sameh per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, July 30, 2019. We have three appointments today for consideration from council. David Bush for the Commission on Human Relations, David Onifor to the Civil Service Commission, and Professor Mary Ann Herman to the Ethics Hearing Board. And I'm joined by Councilwoman Darlene Harris today. So with that said, could we hear a little bit from... Do you want the clerk?
Yep, we'll read them. Bill 1810, Resolution Appointing David C. Bush to Serve as a Member of the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire, October 31, 2022. Bill Number 1814, Resolution Appointing David F. Onifor to Serve as a Member of the Civil Service Commission for a Term to Expire, December 31, 2021. Bill Number 1893, Resolution Appointing Professor Mary Ann Herman to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2022.
Thank you. And I'm going to allow each of you to say a few words about yourselves and then we're going to open it up to questioning from council members. Do you want to start?
Thank you very much for having us this morning. When Mayor Paduto nominated me for this position, I was very honored to be here and had some interaction with Deputy Mayor Gilman. So in reviewing the website and talking to the commission's staff, I believe that my ability to serve from my professional career dovetail quite nicely to this commission and look forward to participating as a citizen and proud Pittsburgher.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Herman. I have been teaching at Duquesne for four years now. I've been teaching law for a total of seven years. I teach legal reasoning, I teach legal skills, and I will be teaching real property law as well. My dean nominated me for this position and I feel that it would be a good position for me to help enable, to represent my school and to see how the law interacts with the government.
I'll tell you, my brother was on the board of Duquesne.
Oh, great.
University for years. He passed away. Next.
Good morning. My name's David Onifor and thank you for having us this morning. I'm a lifelong Pittsburgher. My husband and I reside in Bloomfield. I'm a Realtor, my office is in Squirrel Hill, but I've got an oath of the city very well, selling all over the city. Before that, worked for the family business and my specific job was an operations manager overseeing a number of employees, but my background was in human resources. So in reading what the Civil Service Commission does, I think I would bring a nice compliment to what the mission is all about.
Thank you. And I have no questions. I just want to thank you all for your willingness to serve and I may speak after Councilwoman Harris, but Councilwoman Harris, do you have any questions?
Yes, I'd like to see why each of you would like these positions, this position. And I guess you'll go first.
Councilwoman, I believe that it's hardwired into my DNA to participate as a citizen in our community. It's important for the fabric of our community. I believe, I can't presume, but I suspect that's why you're here as well. The notion that we believe in the future of our city and however we can participate to do that. Throughout my career, we have participated in my family throughout charities and different outreach programs and I'm proud to represent my bank here and their community outreach efforts as well. So in kind of closing that comment, my family has had 400 employees in this city, so I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of human relations and how to understand people. And I think we come from a place of understanding and communication and try to find resolution to any conflict or issue.
You have a number of awards and great references here.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, as a lawyer, of course, ethics is extremely important to me and my profession. And now that I am teaching law, I need to and want to convey that to our students. And so in that position, it has put me in a spot to do so and also to see how policies of our city are implemented through law. That's what we do. So I feel that it's a good fit for me. Personally, I would like to become involved in the community that I'm now living in. I've been at Duquesne for four years. I love Duquesne. Duquesne is a big part of the city, especially the lawyers. And so I would really be honored to have the opportunity to be involved.
Yeah. I think Duquesne's a great school also. My son went there.
Thank you. After reading what the Civil Service Commission does, I really think that it's important that everybody's voice be heard throughout the process. And I think that I would be a good fit to be able to do that and to be able to help, you know, hear everybody out and hear their cases and make decisions based on, you know, the rules and regulations. Again, to add what Mr. Bush said, we, my husband and I, our families have been very heavily involved in the community and through different charity organizations and do a lot for the city. And I think this would be another compliment to what we already do and in service to our city.
Really nervous, huh?
He heard about your reputation.
I thank you all for your willingness to serve.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Could you just briefly for the public tell everyone what neighborhood you live in?
David Bush, I live in Shadyside.
Mary Ann Herman, I currently live in Highland Park, but I'm moving to Shadyside in September.
David Onifor, Bloomfield.
So I'm just going to point out that I have been really working with the administration to get some geographical diversity and also diversity in terms of economic status and everything. I just think that we need diversity on every board. And although there's a lot of great people that are really highly qualified, we need to hear the voices of all people in the city. And so I have been working with the administration on getting people, but I want to be honest with you, it's really difficult to find people willing to serve on some of these boards and authorities because, or commissions, because they are during, they meet during the day. And so I think that's some of the things we need to look at, finding time where it's more, where it's easier for other people to be able to attend. Not everybody can take a day off work, not everybody has that flexibility. So I think we're working with the administration, but I want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I know, we know Molly, your sister, Onifor, and I just want to say she's been amazing for the city of Pittsburgh. And so I'm sure the mayor has put some great appointments forward, so I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve and wish you luck. And that's it.
Thank you.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, July 30, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Five members present.
Thank you. And could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. And early reminders, council's recess will begin tomorrow. Hooray. Wednesday, July 31 and will continue through Friday, August 23. Council's regular meeting schedule will resume on Tuesday, August 27 and Wednesday, August 28 with the regular standing committees meetings, both scheduled to begin at 10:00 And our next order of business is proclamations, but before we go into proclamations, I just want to say I'm cheering the meeting today because Council President Kraus's mother is in the hospital, seriously ill, and our thoughts and prayers are with he and his family today. And with that said, can we start with the proclamations and we'll begin with Councilwoman Harris.
Okay, would those with Cafe on a Corner come forward, please? If there's anyone else with you, you can bring them up. Cafe on a Corner was a nuisance bar at one time and we had it closed down and I believe it was New Hope Church that had it. And I guess it was about five years ago, Michael and Latrice had taken it over and they really help people out in the neighborhood, especially the children. And the other thing is the city of Pittsburgh does not have a warming site to help those on the north side. So they have a warming site for those people on the north side. So they, and they've done so much good. We just got done having a get-together on peace and we had the police officers there and New Hope Church and both of you and you. So I really believe that this proclamation is in place this morning. And it reads, whereas Cafe on a Corner is a full-service restaurant and catering business on the north side of Pittsburgh and has been in business since 2014. Its owners, Michael and Latrice Blackwell, also formed a nonprofit organization, Kitchen of Grace, in conjunction with Cafe on a Corner. Its social mission is to empower residents with the realization and gain employment and community development in the workforce readiness, general life skills, culinary, and hospitality training, and educational opportunities to 16- to 20-year-olds. And whereas, the first component of KOG deliver approach involved academic instruction, hands-on skill development, mentoring, career and personal counseling, workplace readiness, and job placement assistance. Mr. Blackwell, along with voluntary instructors who were recruited for their special knowledge, will provide theory and practice, information targeting industrial standards for safety, sanitation, and food preparation. See, I didn't tell you even half of what they have done. And whereas, the second component, long-term goal of KOG, is to incorporate an intensive one-year to 18-month apprenticeship program that will offer business skills, building, and entrepreneur-minded young people and adult residents in the Pittsburgh area. One-on-one career specialists are assigned as mentor coaches and to participate. Support is given to develop career planning, to assist with job search, and to support in advancement careers. And whereas, the third component includes applying training and utilization test service model, this component ensures that individual development marketable skills while also enhancing teamwork skills, communication, and self-confidence. In addition to food service, job skill training, and life skills, wraparound services, job placement, retention services, nutritional education of fresh prepared meals are added benefits. This result in the efficiency and revenues of social enterprise being leveraged by providing training and opportunity to practice their skills in real-life settings and by participating in the Annex Kitchen at Cafe on a Corner, the Kitchen Network. That way, more time and resources are available to focus on growing the number of individuals that benefit from the program. And whereas, Cafe on the Corner and KOG has formed alliance with companies in Pittsburgh area and the Pittsburgh Public Schools to provide onsite training and job opportunities as well as other type of cooperative and technical assistance. Kitchen of Grace will work with local community-based organizations to offer community service placement, small business development agencies, civic organizations, and business to provide internships opportunities for KOG students post in development agencies, I think I read that already, post in-house training. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh commends Latrice and Michael Blackwell, founders and owners of the Cafe on the Corner in the Kitchen of Grace, celebrating five years for bringing positive solutions and change to the north side of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion. Motion passed. Approved.
Wow, that's a whole lot when you put it in black and white. You don't realize how much you actually do until you see it written down in paper because you're constantly moving and always doing something. But I would like to take this opportunity to first thank the city council, the chamber, and Darlene Harris for this awesome opportunity to be presented with this proclamation. We do not take this lightly. But you know, when we stood this morning and pledged allegiance to the flag and it says, "For justice for all," when we say that, that is what Cafe on the Corner and Kitchen of Grace, that's what we stand for, especially for our youth in our community, to make sure that justice for all is implemented. And so we pour ourselves out to our community, to our young people, one being here this morning who is actually an internship in Darlene Harris's office, Jayvon Johnson. And so we're just honored to be able to, and so proud to see that our young people, not all of them are bad, not all of them are into mischief, but you do have a diamond in the rough. And Kitchen of Grace is making an impact in our community by touching the lives of our young people. Me and my husband is dedicated and we are committed to doing the hard work, getting in the trenches, and making a difference in the lives of our youth because they need us. And if we don't make that change or if we don't be that advocate for them, who will? So again, we just want to thank you for this opportunity and this time and this proclamation. Thank you.
First of all, let me piggyback off of my wife and thanking the city council, thanking Darlene Harris and you guys out there. I have a very short story because I'm not very good at just standing. I'm a doer. We have, we've been blessed with two young ladies who have went through the program. At this point in their state, in their lives, they're on their way to Temple University thanks to Kitchen of Grace and Cafe on the Corner. And one and both of the young ladies turned around and looked at my wife and I and said that when they get done with college, they want to come back to Kitchen of Grace and they want to pour out into the community all that they have received from Kitchen of Grace. And those two young ladies is a milestone in the efforts that my wife and I is going to continue to pour out into the community and to encourage young folks to get up and to come on in and do something for themselves by picking themselves up and doing something positive in their lives. And I want to thank all of you guys for just giving us a couple of minutes just to pour out how we feel about what God has called us to do. I want to thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I wanted to give you... could you please come up? This is one wonderful program also. Come on in, don't be shy. Okay. And this proclamation reads, whereas more than half a century ago, in Pittsburgh, the birthplace of artificial intelligence, Carnegie Mellon University, Alan Newell and Herb Simmons had a vision for a general problem solver for the human race. Since then, their vision has become a filter, people attracted to the building, a solution to real-world problems through artificial intelligence. And whereas, for the first time in history, Ready AI, the first A I K to 12 education company founded in Pittsburgh, host the world's artificial intelligence competition for youth. And that's WACI, right? Okay. On Carnegie Mellon University's campus, where students from every continent participate in this event. And whereas, WACI is a testament of Pittsburgh's commitment to innovation and fostering this city as the right place to lead the AI charged in the 21st century for the next generation, students and educators alike. The WACI aims to bring AI to students around the world and sparks creative innovation and artistic demonstrations through technology that can make and change for a better future. And whereas, WACI is a global competition for students ages four to 18, challenges them to solve real problems using AI technology. And whereas, WACI and Ready AI believe in bringing AI education to every child in the city of Pittsburgh and beyond by opening doors to artificial intelligence for underrepresented talent through education. And whereas, a vision of AI is a world where diversity, thought, perspective, and voices unlock AI's potential to benefit humanity. And we believe it starts in Pittsburgh. And whereas, there are many different definitions of AI. At Ready AI and, I said it all those times, WACI, 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 we consider... We consider AI to be a branch of computer science that allows computers to make predictions and decisions to problem solve. Artificial intelligence is having a huge impact on our world and can be used to solve such as climate change, misleading news headlines, and disease diagnosis. And whereas, W A C E and Ready AI empowers Pittsburgh's next generation to be AI's leaders in our shared future. We believe in giving the tools to the next generation to bring about change in our world. And now therefore be it resolved that W A C E is celebrating its second annual event where children from over 195 countries are invited to attend and use AI to solve some of our most pressing issues around the globe. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, July 27, 2019, to be Artificial Intelligence Learning Day for Kids in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Proclamation approved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. I'd like to thank the city council. My name is David Turetsky. I'm a professor of computer science at Carnegie Mellon, and I created the Calypso software framework that was used in the W A C E competition. Artificial intelligence, one of the birthplaces of AI is here in Pittsburgh, as councilwoman noted. What's changed is in the last couple of years, artificial intelligence has gone from a subject for PhD students and advanced undergraduates to something that's being taught to children of all ages. I, in addition to working with Ready AI, I lead the AI for K-12 Initiative, which is developing national guidelines in the U.S. for teaching AI in K-12. And we really mean K-12. Students in kindergarten show up, having spent several years talking to Alexa, they're already talking to AI systems. And what we're concerned about is how to help them understand how these systems work and how they'll influence society. One of the first things we did as part of the AI for K-12 Initiative is make a poster called "The Five Big Ideas in Artificial Intelligence" that's designed to be placed in classrooms or given to lawmakers and legislators. I had the honor of giving a copy to Mike Doyle a few months ago, and I brought a few copies for the council. So, thank you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlene, and thank you for the city of Pittsburgh to make the AI education such a priority for the city and for the people. I'm from Ready AI, my name's Andrew Chen. Ready AI is a startup company in Pittsburgh. Our mission is to bring the AI to the kids, to the K through 12 student, to help them understand AI and understand the societal impact of artificial intelligence. And we are founded in Pittsburgh and we are committed to the Pittsburgh community, and from here, we go to the world. And every year, we welcome the students from all over the world to come to Pittsburgh as the birthplace of artificial intelligence to celebrate this holiday for the student learning AI. Thank you.
And I think it's great for Pittsburgh, all of our districts and around the world. So if the rest of council would come up also for Pittsburgh. Did you want to get some too?
So we have the Sean McDowell proclamation, and we're giving Councilman Connor a few minutes to get here. I was going to try to make you wait. My husband's listened to WDVE for over 30-some years, and I married him anyway. But I just want to say, but I want to say, I just was trying to wait for, actually, he and all the guys at Okay Grocery. Well, you, and then that toilet shit was going to make you.
What an entrance, what an entrance.
Just get off the plane.
So if that doesn't show dedication, I don't know what does.
I thought I was pushing it without a tie.
Never fly to Chicago. Rule number one. Could I have everybody here for Sean McDowell and the DVE crew? Again, I apologize, I'm dressed like this and I'm late. I flew into Chicago last night and we missed our connecting flight, so this is, this is what you guys are getting, so. We got the whole crew here. We got everybody here today. I want to thank everybody for coming down here today. Obviously, this is a special day for us at city council. If you don't know Sean McDowell, he has been one of the voices of Pittsburgh and the region for almost 40-plus years, and it's an honor that, that we were able to give this proclamation to him. It's well-deserved. If you ever listen to DVE, like a lot of people in the city do, the afternoon drive is always something that we look forward to, and it, it makes the traffic a little bit easier. So thank you very much for all your years. Whereas, after more than four decades of bringing classic rock and roll to Pittsburgh radio listeners, Sean McDowell has announced he is retiring. And whereas, a graduate of Upper St. Clair High School and the University of Dayton, Sean McDowell is the son of Mary Louise and the late iconic TV news anchor Al McDowell. At the University of Dayton, he changes major from journalism to broadcasting to his father's dismay until he landed his first job in 1978 at Y, at WYDD in New Kensington. Whereas, using his degree from college for the next 41 years, Sean worked for FM 97 from 1981 to 1993 before moving to WDVE, where he began what would end up being a 26-year stint as the afternoon drive-on-air personality. With a short hiatus last summer to have open-heart surgery, Sean, that's a good reason to take a couple of days off. Sean has hosted the iHeart Public Affairs Show since 2001, is a supporter of local blues scene, has worked and helped many Pittsburgh charities, and currently hosts the 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. shift, Monday through Friday, as well as 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 shift on Saturdays. And whereas, in 2016, Sean was inducted as a member of the Pittsburgh Rock and Roll Legends, our version of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. Marrying to Sidney McDowell, Sean has plans after retirement to continue his volunteer work with the homeless, veterans, animals, and the, and the food bank. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Sean McDowell for his extraordinary career in broadcasting, spanning four decades, 25 years of which were with WDVE, and wish Sean a healthy, happy, and productive retirement. And now be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, July 31, 2019, to be Sean McDowell Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Is there a second? All in favor? Those opposed? Proclamation approved.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, Pittsburgh City Councilman Corey O'Connor. Thank you, Pittsburgh City Council. I also have to thank Minio's Pizza on Murray Avenue in Squirrel Hill, because when I started in radio in 1978, all I could afford to eat was one slice of Minio's Pizza on the way home from work at WYDD. And to be able to spend my entire 41-year career in my hometown of Pittsburgh in radio, that never, ever happens, I am so deeply grateful. I'm, I'm very humbled. My mother worked here in the city county building for 20 years in the 70s and the 80s. She took the bus in from the South Hills, took the bus back home at night. My mother brought home the best Grant Street stories you can imagine, better than my father's Channel 4 Action News TV stories every night. We have all of our, our management here from iHeart in Green Tree, we have top managers here from programming, sales, promotions, digital. So for this short time on July 30th of 2019, the inmates are running the asylum up on Fleet Street because everyone is here. I'm very humbled and I'm very grateful, and I am also, I don't have words to describe my thanks to my wife Cindy, who has put up with me for 33 years. Thank you again, Pittsburgh City Council.
Congratulations, Sean. I just wanted to give one real quick story. I'm the regional president here for iHeart Pittsburgh, and I've worked with Sean over 25 years and back and forth in my career. And one story about Sean is, and you can tell from the entertainment business, he really dresses up, right? So we did, we roasted Sean years ago, and so he had to dress up, so he had to wear a sport coat. And it's like, you know, when you put those pants on and you haven't found it in a long time, and all of a sudden you pull out a $20 bill and you go, whoa my God, this is great. So he had his sports coat on, and he's like, pocket, he pulled it out, and it was a baggie. I'm not going to tell you what was in it, it's your own imagination, but it was better than a $20 bill. Congratulations, Sean.
Speaking of underdressed, since I'm underdressed, we'll have all of council please come up for the photo.
Thank you, and congratulations to all the proclamation awardees. Sorry, Madam Clerk, we have two proclamations to be read into the record. Could you take that on the other side? We have two proclamations to be read into the record. Oh, you want a minute? What am I doing? Oh, here, come here, come here. I apologize, I apologize.
Tell them about the shish kebab.
Oh my God. So as Stuart Shory, I'll say, I used to coordinate the volunteers and special events for the Ronald McDonald House for about nine years. And one year, WDVE helped me, long before I was elected to city council. I felt badly because the event wasn't that well-attended, so the next day I made them all shish kebab, in which I'm still waiting for my container back, 30 years ago, or 15 years ago. Thank you. I wasn't going to share that story publicly. I apologize. Madam Clerk, can we please have the proclamations to be read into the record?
Reverend Burgess presents, be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, July 31, 2019, to be Retirement Housing Foundation Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith presents, be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, August 4, 2019, to be Mike Awards Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Those opposed? Proclamation's approved. And now we move on to the next order of business and public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before city council has three minutes to, to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. When the green light comes on, it will indicate the start of three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize, and when the red light comes on, your time is, is expired, is up. I would like to remind everyone of the rules of council and state that comment is limited to matters of, of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted, and order will be maintained at all times. Will the first speaker please come to the podium?
Good morning, my name is Yvonne M. Brown. I live in the Hill District. And there's some things that have been happening here in council, and the main thing is the disrespect that council shows to we the citizens. I say over and over, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart, I am your boss, all of us. We are your boss, but to act like we're nothing, it bothers me. I've been coming 20-something years. You know, as I walked down the hill, you know, I got sad. I thought about Oralie Carroll. This was a black woman from the South, didn't have that much education, top of her country. But she stopped the police from grabbing our teenagers and children, the police, and making them tell, and then when they tell, they was killing the kids. She said, "Leave our babies alone." Two years after, it's about a couple of weeks after she died, they did, they got another teenager. He told them stuff. The mother didn't know about it. He calls his mom and he says, "She gonna kill me." It's on, it's, it's, the jail could hear the, 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 the hit being made on this boy. He calls his mother and said, "I'm gonna die." He does. I'm bringing this up because Hardy, they said he was a- I'm bringing this up because Hardy, they said he was a good policeman, that he worked with our kids, and he worked with us. But when you got police, that when they run up on our children, our black children, our children of color, they're never above suspicion. They'll knock them in the head, they'll call them names. Hey, and the first thing they do is say that our children are criminals, they make them criminal. Look, I called KDKA, Mangino, I don't care if I'm Mangino, but there was a white man calling in and saying how, that we as black people want the police dead, we won't tell. I tried to call in, I have a cousin, think he's dead. He told, and he's dead. I tried to call Mangino, wouldn't put me on, because Mangino one time said, "Hey, you criminals up there in the hill, that's where I live at." But see, you need to understand that when O'Connor lived, them teenagers in Squirrel Hills, they did something, they had a contact person. If they could do restitution, they were not charged. But see, our black children, and he was, "Criminals, but you made criminals." They never get caught, because you didn't pay restitution, they never go to court. Our children go to court, and you make them as criminals. Do you understand, when I talk about, when I was talking about them two raccoons, baby raccoons, and everybody felt so sorry because they, in the garbage can, can't get out, they looked so frightened. Everybody felt sorry for the raccoons. But nobody felt sorry, like when Anton was running, and they shot him in the back, they killed him. You say, "Because the laws say, if you feel afraid." These laws, they are writing, you're writing that they're killing us. And I'm gonna keep on coming. I'm coming, you have to know what you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please. And I apologize, one of the air conditioning units are down here in this chamber, so it's really hot.
Good morning, Council. My name is David Adams.
Good morning, Mr. Adams.
White Pine Place, Pittsburgh, PA 15221. Before I get started, I just want to kind of take everybody back and show you what we've been trying to talk to you about over the past several months. Yesterday, we had a crisis involving gas line explosion in Hills, and we see the fiasco that occurred after the situation, which made it really much worse than what it was. This was an extreme failure of the Local Emergency Planning Committee of Allegheny County. Things like that should be discussed. People who know more than some of our officials who were even in place would have been able to bring that up in the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Do you know where the new lines are for pipes? Have they been updated with this or that? When you have a whole government, you lack a political debate, and there's no alternative voice in a room, and you all are facing the same ideology, the same mindset, following the same boss, one man turn left, you all turn left, there's no voice or alternative voice for planning. And this is what established the need for our brand-new historic-first, nation's-first citywide citizen corps, which I introduced to you all last week. I gave you the need for that citizen corps. We are going to be launching and putting the veterans and recruiting for veterans next month to start this Pittsburgh Citizen Corps. It will be led by veterans. We will be starting and end this book while you're on vacation, you have a chance to understand, we will be recruiting in your political districts. When I go home, I will be calling districts number, and our first half of August is going to start with districts 5, 7, 2, and 4. I will be calling those districts particularly to get your CDCs, so we can set up the veteran recruiting. We'll be doing two recruitings, one during the month of August in your district, and one through the month of September. We would like to work with those CDCs to get the veterans involved in this. We want to have this up and moving by early next year. Then we're going to open it to the citizens. Now, any citizen that you may have in your district that may be astute with some skill that you know that they can provide that is either emergency or disaster, preparedness in the field of industry or field, we will also take them in with the veteran interviews. This is not a walk-up volunteer thing. They must be interviewed and meet a criteria for this leadership. So this is a national example. It's already sitting on the desk of DHS and FEMA right now. This is a nation's first citywide. If you notice anything about Citizen Corps, you know that they operate on a county level, but Allegheny County does not believe that citizens have any part in emergency planning. And they're not involved in emergency planning either. If you all pay attention to emergency services, it's all based on response. Here's a coca prayer while your house is falling off a hill. No one's talking about mitigation, no one's talking about what do we do in the case of, and that's why emergency planning is omitted federally, statewide, countywide, locally, and neighborhood-wise. So I'm submitting one to each and every council district, and one for the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. When I come back, after you come back from vacation, we're going to have a real serious talk. Next speaker, please. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hey, everybody. Again, I know most of you have had many conversations. My name is Jade Warren. I'm the executive director, CEO of the Fair Housing Partnership. Just to go kind of quickly for this, I just wanted to bring something to your attention you may already know. Looking at the appointment to the Housing Opportunity Fund, I have no criticism of those being appointed. I have concern of the lack of an appointment. There's supposed to be a fair housing advocate seat that's supposed to be appointed. It remains vacant. As the, as quite frankly, the fair housing agency for this city, we are both shocked and concerned that we continue to voice it to you and to everyone who will listen, including the mayor's office, and yet there is no fair housing appointment. To be clear on kind of qualification, because somebody had come up to me and said, you know, somebody who was asked them, it said that there wasn't anyone qualified. And I said to myself, well, that's interesting, is I'm the only person in the state who's actually qualified through the National Fair Housing Alliance and HUD's National Fair Housing Training Academy. So that's kind of odd, being that I've done this for 20 years, and I'm in fact contracted with the City of Pittsburgh to do the fair housing work, and continue to offer, by the way, training to any of your staffs that need it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was brought to your attention, because I'll be meeting again with the mayor's office, and again I'll be saying, kind of, where is the fair housing appointment? And I understand that fair housing is difficult, that we slow down process, that we ask the questions. We say things like, wait a second, you want to spend $10 million, will that increase segregation in our city? Let's take a look at that before we spend it. And oftentimes, people don't want to do that. I also want to speak on two other issues that are before us. One is the CMU Create Lab resolution that's out there, so that you know, in the work that we do, getting data and access to data helps us in order to really look and say yes or no, this is increasing or decreasing segregation in our community. So it's a worthwhile proposal, just to point that out. And then the last thing I want to say, as the fair housing agency for this city, we're the only QFHO, which stands for Qualified Fair Housing Agency under HUD, we're the only one who, we've been doing this for 30 years. We just want to let you know that, one, we appreciate the work that you are doing when we look at things like source of income, when we look at things like trying to do IZ, inclusive zoning. But we know how much more work there needs to be done, and we're counting on you all to take those extra steps, to not allow things like, yeah, we're going to spend $10 million, but we're not going to question whether or not it's going to impact segregation. We expect that you do that with every dollar that you spend. We are here as a resource, we're here to work with you, and we hope that you'll take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Scapoleto. I'm a resident of the Regent Square neighborhood of Pittsburgh, and I am a legislative intern for Councilperson Strasburger. Over the course of the summer, I had the opportunity to assist the district aid office with constituent services, with the facilitation of community meetings in Pittsburgh, and with legislative research. And throughout that legislative research, I found that one topic that was going perilously unaddressed in the City of Pittsburgh was air quality. To be frank with you all, air quality in the City of Pittsburgh is abysmal. According to the American Lung Association's 2019 report on air, Pittsburgh air quality received an F grade for air in terms of the levels of ozone and soot particulate in the air that ranks as badly as Los Angeles County in California, which is shocking. And in Councilperson Strasburger's community listening session on air quality, I also was personally appalled by the testimonies of people with no history of lung disease, developing asthma, and other respiratory illness in the City of Pittsburgh. Some people even saying that they were deterred for living here because of the perilous quality of our air. So I researched two simple policy options that the council can pursue to help ameliorate the issue of air quality, because I understand that it is a very nebulous and difficult issue to tackle. And those two policy initiatives would be the purchase of hybrid police vehicles in the city, and the continued installation of smart signal technology on intersections in the city. So first, with hybrid police vehicles, because I know people have a reflexive deflection toward hybrid police vehicles. According to statistics from Car and Driver Magazine, hybrid police, the 2020 Ford Police Interceptor hybrid police vehicle has a 0 to 100 miles per hour rating that is better than the Dodge and Chevrolet non-hybrid equivalents. So there isn't going to be any detriment in terms of performance with hybrid police vehicles. But their 2020 hybrid police vehicles have a 50% better miles per gallon than our current police vehicles, which would amount to about a savings of $1,856 per year in the cost of fuel per vehicle that is transitioned to hybrid police vehicles. And this amounts to 17,504 pounds of carbon dioxide that are reduced per vehicle by switching to hybrid police vehicles. Additionally, hybrid police vehicles are not the only advantageous environmental policy that council can pursue. We can also pursue continued installation of smart signal technology. Smart signal technology are algorithmic sensors in order to improve the expedited flow of traffic. And according to a study from our friends at Carnegie Mellon University, the installation of smart signal technology in the city can reduce emissions by 21% simply by reducing traveling times and idling times. So by reducing traveling times and idling times, you're going to have happier, healthier constituents, and a more prosperous City of Pittsburgh. And so I thank you all for listening to me today, and I thank Councilperson Strasburger and her staff for the opportunity she gave me over the summer. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My name is Leif Metz. I'm a real estate lawyer at Buchanan, Igrisal, and Rooney. And this comment relates to a bill that council is considering this morning, which is 2018-07-02. This relates to LERTA real estate tax abatements, and council is considering an amendment to redesign the program and change the focus of the benefits. And one amendment that the Committee on Finance and Law added last week was a grandfathering clause to provide that the old LERTA rules will apply to any project where the building permit is issued by 12/31/19. So that's a very helpful change, and I thank the committee for that. And I think that was Councilman O'Connor's amendment, so thank you for that, Councilman. And our request is that council consider extending that deadline for a few additional months to March 31 of 2020. The reason is that we have a number of clients that are currently under agreement to purchase real estate for meaningful developments in the city, and they'll have five months left under the current proposed ordinance to obtain the building permits. And it's a lengthy process, and it's involved in order to provide community groups and the city planners sufficient time to review the plans. So it's a long process, and there's not quite enough time to get that done for a number of projects in the pipeline by the end of the year. So we appreciate very much the grandfathering clause, and respectfully request that council consider extending that date by three months to March 31, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Pittsburgh City of the Hill and Madison City, Wisconsin. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2020, the American Society for Microbiology and Genetic Society of America, author of Gen Sex Identity Formation 2019. July 2019 is GIS-sponsored African Intelligence Month. Biological intelligence, Dr. Margaret Collins, zoologist, the first African-American woman in entomology, her work was on termites, author of Science and the Question of Human Equality. A concern of City Council is sex-gen equality and the support for local, statewide, and national LGBTQI communities. All nine district representatives of the Council of the City of Pittsburgh support the LGBTQI claim for equal treatment to non-LGBTQIs under Pittsburgh local, PA state, and US national laws. Does anyone on Pittsburgh Council dispute this claim? 16 July 2019, Councilor O'Connor said, "No one would confuse me, could confuse me with Councilor Strasburger." Based on what? Physical looks, physiognomic differences? Mr. Not, or Ms. Not Mr. O'Connor? How would we know? What proof? That you are XY to her XX? You're a diploid to her haploid? LGBTQI info intel input, the least reliable indicator of the gender, but especially the sex identity of an individual, SII, is looks. Do any of you councilors disagree? Any of you district representatives a clone from unisexual parthenogenesis, like the mite, rather, pulpus, phynesis? All of you originated, therefore, in embryos made from one part male, one part female? All of you, all of us, are therefore bisexual in this sense. Does anyone here demur? The 23-chromosome pair of a human female is made up of two bars of X. The chromosome pair for male is one X bar and a shorter Y bar. We're close to being able to replace those two. So what the female does is to produce similarity. What the male does is to produce dissimilarity and diversity. Do any of you, understanding the biology and the genetics of this, disagree with this analysis? If so, then the SGIG, the sex genetic identity of a group, say, of the Democratic Party, with its diversity, with its bundle of candidate amongst for President of the United States, is in this sense more male. The Republican Party with its universe dominated by a thug candidate is more female, a boon led by woman-in-chief Trump.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. David Testor, Highland Park. I wanted to report to council that last Friday, I went to the Board of Directors of the Port Authority to discuss the situation in Morningside. And afterwards, the COO, the, came up to me and added another excuse as to why they did not want to do the reasonable detour that would have saved so much of the problems that have happened for five months. And we are facing, of course, coming up a major project this fall, we're told, along the streets, and so it's interesting that there's some dawdling. Fortunately, the councilwoman from District 7 had offered to hold a meeting of information, bringing together the Water Company and Port Authority at some point before the fall. However, the Port Authority people said they hadn't been contacted about that yet. With the detour, with the delay of your time off during August, fall is coming up very quickly, and so I do hope that something would be done to address this. Anyway, that's my report on that. So I would also add that to some of the other comments earlier on air quality and issues with housing, et cetera, that the city has followed a policy in going along with the Allegheny Conference push for real estate speculation and suburban sprawl that has had us with a continuing decline in population, having one of the highest rates of land consumption and sprawl in the country. Certainly during the 1990s, we had identified as having the third-highest rate in the country. And that was pushed by a lot of falsifications in the planning process, which the Citizen Advisory Panel that was in place at that time was able to uncover. And that is, of course, something that has, that process of public participation is something I've been advocating for a number of years, including dealing with the Port Authority issues, as they affected Morningside most recently, but also with the Open Government Amendment that we pursued before and hope to continue with. This is something that is of major concern, that we have more public participation. Fortunately, we do have public comment, and we do able to have the opportunity to bring the items before you. So that I thank you, and encourage you over your relaxed times in August, that come back refreshed, and that we do have a hearing or meeting on matters in Morningside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testor. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Megan Conferhammon. I'm the program director at the Fair Housing
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Megan Confair-Hammon. I'm the program director at the Fair Housing Partnership with J. J. Warren. And as a private citizen in Pittsburgh, my wife and I are 10-year residents in this greenfield. And prior to that, we lived in Point Breeze. I simply wanted to comment quickly regarding any extension or further extensions regarding the LERTA tax structure. And simply on a personal note and in the work that I do, I am a child of affordable housing. As the oldest of four to a deaf mom, I am deaf myself, that was focused on mainstreaming us in order to provide access where we weren't discriminated against as we pursued jobs and education opportunities. As a child of affordable housing, I come from Montgomery County, Maryland, where inclusionary zoning was cutting-edge in the 80s when it was established. And my family was homeless at the point that we achieved access to these IZ units in Montgomery County after my parents separated. We were homeless with the family friend's farmhouse in West Virginia, and then struggling on our own as a family of five to a single mom. And I say that personal story here today regarding any extensions and grandfatherings of opportunities that are meant to provide more affordable housing and access. Because despite that, IZ gave me access to a school district in Maryland, where as a high school graduate, I attended Carnegie Mellon University studying architecture. And I always intended to leave Pittsburgh after college, and certainly, as you can see, I have not. And I have stayed because what I learned at Carnegie Mellon and the access that I received as a child who gained access to an amazing school district and amazing education opportunities, despite where my background and disenfranchisement was coming from, was that in architecture classes at CMU, I realized that what my true passion was, was understanding the people in all those buildings, was understanding what was happening when we cited buildings and housing and apartments, and who the people were that lived in them and what that meant. And through that, after college, I ended up at the Fair Housing Partnership, and it turns out, I never left that either. Because the access of housing, access of equity, and access of recognizing all the different choices we make because of the disenfranchisement and lack of privilege that we face for a variety of reasons. And I am proud to remain in Pittsburgh and to be a Pittsburgher, and to know that we are all fighting here as well to provide the same affordable housing to the next generation of children who have every bit of knowledge and ability, and it's a matter of access in order to tap into that to be successful. So I ask that you continue to push forward any affordable housing, certainly with a lens in terms of providing access under equity and historical infrastructure in which has disenfranchised entire communities, and to ensure that we provide access to all as much as possible, and not to continue grandfathering in previous legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers. Councilwoman Burgess, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers.
Good morning, Mr. Or Council President, or Councilwoman Burgess.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Strasburger for myself, Councilwoman Kail Smith for the Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And also, Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Chair, myself for Councilwoman, Council President Kraus, the Chair of Hearings. We have four appointments, I was going to put my glasses on. Four appointments and one reappointment, Ethics Hearing Board, and Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board, and two communications, acting pay approval and travel request authorization.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1923, Resolution Appointing Samantha Bushman to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire March 31, 2021. Bill Number 1924, Resolution Appointing Knowledge Bill Hudson to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2021. Bill Number 1925, Resolution Appointing Ethel Johnson to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2020. Bill Number 1926, Resolution Reappointing Mark Matheson to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2020. Bill Number 1927, Resolution Appointing Megan Winters to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2020. Bill Number 1928, Communication from Jennifer Ozinga, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approvals on behalf of the Department of City Planning for Andrew Dash and Sharon Abdul-Savi, per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. Bill Number 1929, Communication from Megan Stanley, Executive Director of the Commission on Human Relations, submitting a travel authorization request for Commissioner Wasilima Mohammed to attend the 2019 International Association of Official Human Rights Agencies Annual Conference, and for housing solicitor Jeffrey Ruder, and Commissioner Representative Rita Porterfield, Chris Salt, to attend the John Marshall Law School for Fair Housing Training Conference.
Thank you. And we have four new appointees, and so I don't know what the rule of counsel is, if you'd like to hold for an interview, or if you want to pass today. Councilwoman Harris, you're the one who usually wants to hold for interviews. Councilwoman Harris, do you want to hold for interviews for appointees, or no?
Yes.
For new appointees. Okay. So do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we interview anyone that is not coming in for an extra term.
New interviews. Four? I mean, do we have a second?
What's this for?
This is for four new appointees. We have one that's a reappointment, and then we have four that are new appointees. And I want to hold for an interview too, because I also asked the administration to point Megan Winters to the Housing Opportunity Fund, which I also serve on, and so I want to make sure that she has the opportunity to talk about how she's going to also work in District 2.
The only thing is that this comes back before us. The recommendation from this group comes back before council. I mean, they're an advisory group, and the actual document comes back to council for approval and consideration.
Well, there's also the Ethics Hearing Board on here.
Okay. I'm talking about for the housing.
Yeah, well, there's more than one. So we're asking a motion to hold for all four interviews, or not?
Not for, not for the reappointments.
Not for the reappointments. No, we're not. This is just for the new appointees.
Right.
Okay. So we're going to, so we have a motion to hold for interviews. Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We'll hold for interviews, and the clerk will work with Council President Kraus to schedule. And then, now, what do we do with this other one? The next one. Councilwoman.
Unfinished business.
Okay. And then we have the unfinished business. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk has the bills for Council President Kraus.
Okay. Bill 1810, Resolution Appointing David C. Bush to serve as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire October 31, 2022. Bill Number 1814, Resolution Appointing David F. Onifer to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2021. Bill Number 1893, Resolution Appointing Professor Mary Ann Herman to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire June 30, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The interviews were held this morning, July 30, 2019. Is there any further unfinished business for council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next order of business, Reports of Committee for Final Action, and we'll also get Council President Kraus on the phone, correct?
We just voted on those two.
Oh, I apologize. We need to also vote on these, on a communication. Madam Clerk, can you read the communication?
I've read it.
You've read it already?
I've not.
Okay.
We just voted to approve.
Do we?
We've been told.
Okay, so we need a motion to vote on the communications
There's no objection.
From Bills 1928 and 1929.
Bill moved.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications approved. If I did something wrong? And now we'll move on to the Committee for Final Action. I'm just trying to get Council President Kraus on the phone. Do you want to call him? I'm on my cell phones. You got him?
I'm across.
Okay, tell me when you're ready, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we'll move on to the Reports of Committee for Final Action. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1915, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for July 24, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 701, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 265, Exemptions for Residential Improvements. Bill Number 702, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 267, Exemption for Industrial and Commercial Improvements. Bill Number 1800, Resolution Authorizing the City Solicitor on behalf of the city to petition the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to request the transfer of a portion of certain lot, now part of Enright Parklet, in the East Liberty neighborhood of the city to Pendley Park South, in exchange for an abutting parcel of land of approximately equal size and value as a subject property to be transferred from PPS to the city for consolidation with and use as part of Enright Parklet, plus all necessary or appropriate expenses incurred by the city and/or upon such other terms and conditions as the court or the city authorize and/or direct. Bill Number 1827, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $52,500 in favor of Jennifer Batten and her attorneys, fully releasing the city from all claims and liabilities for alleged personal injuries as described in a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1860, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Executive Director of the Gender Equity Commission to receive grant fundings from the grantmakers of Western Pennsylvania to conduct a listing tour and further providing for expenditures not to exceed $1,000. Bill Number 1861, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $12,876.37 in favor of Duquesne Light for damage to their light pole and transformer on Leonard Street, October 31, 2018. Bill Number 1862, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the city at tax sale, Item A through J, 850 Cirrus, 507 Gearing, 339 Seaword, 848 and 846 California, 2925 Hartman. Bill Number 1863, Resolution Repealing Items and Resolutions Approved on Various Dates, which authorize the sale of property in various wards of the city due to incompletion of sales, Item A through C, 1812 Enoch, 1612 Brighton, 2241 Spokane. Bill Number 1864, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the city of certain property having been placed for sale to adjourned property owners in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Item A through M, 1845 Boulevard of the Allies, Zero Rosetta, 515 Lowell, 118 Dindler, 618 Freeland, 624 Freeland, 544 Herschel, Zero Brighton, 619 Brighton, 854 California, 6 Olive, 260 Kennedy, and 63 Wayland. Bill Number 1866, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 772, by reducing homeward cameras by $53,578 and increase in public safety cameras by $53,578. Bill Number 1900, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $44,910 from the property vehicle line items to professional and technical services, administrative fees, all within the city clerk's office.
You've heard the reading of the titles of the bills. Is any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, there's an error on the amendment. It should be 1702 instead of 1701 that I put for, so I would like to, well, it was, can we hold off until somebody changes this, or can everybody change it to a two? It's 1702.
07?
701.
702. The LERTA. 702. With the LERTA.
Correct.
So I do have amendment. Pardon me?
Thank you.
Council, Councilman Burgess.
I have an amendment. I have a technical amendment. It's just, it's a typo, really. The council's equity analysts are reviewing this legislation, spot a typo, which I'm correcting with amendment. Under the procedures, the provision points to the wrong section of the code. It should be 26504G, not 26503G. So motion to amend with a technical written amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want a discussion on the amended bill?
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Those opposed? No.
No, I said I. I'm going back to the one where there's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The bills approved, amended, Councilwoman Harris on the amended bill.
Okay. Okay. The amendment that I have should read 702, not 701. So do I need staff go back and change that, or could we change it at the table to 702?
Continue verbal amendment at the table. I think on Tuesday, we have to have a written.
She can either write it or make a motion to waive it.
I make a motion to waive the rules.
What are we amending? Is there a second?
I'm not clear.
Okay. All in favor?
No, we didn't get a second.
Didn't get a second.
I thought Councilwoman Smith just seconded.
Yeah, seconded.
Motion, you have to give the number.
Okay, on 702, I have an amendment which came out.
We didn't waive the rules.
We didn't waive the rules. She's making the motion now.
She can't.
I'm just making the motion right now.
Make the motion.
Okay. I have a motion, because there was an error on the bill coming out. It says 701. It is 702. So I would like to waive the rules in order to put this on the table, or I can ask staff to go back and change it.
Is there a second? Seeing there's not a second, Councilwoman, could you please have your staff come? Give a ver, we'll wait. A written amendment.
Okay. Kim, could you please? Oh, they are? Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the bills? Is this the one that LERTA's in? I haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, that's the one with the LERTA.
So I just want to say, in terms of LERTA, I am voting in favor today, but I have already spoken with the mayor's office, that I'd like to make sure that we put further amendments in, to make sure we're actually incentivizing development in our side of town, which it doesn't occur that often, or that often without incentives. And so we're going to work on making sure that, so this is not the very final, even though there's some finality in passing this, this is not the final version. We will amend it again at a later date to encourage development in areas of our side of town that needs it. And I anticipate council members will support it, since I've supported every one of yours initiatives in your side of town. So that's it for me. Any further questions, comments?
We're going to wait on 702. We're voting on everything else.
So that's it for me. Any further questions, comments?
We're gonna wait on 702. We're voting on everything else.
We didn't get a second on the waive of the rules. I mean, we didn't get a second, nor you...
We didn't get a second.
We didn't get a second, and you didn't vote on the waive of the rules.
No, but I thought that they were changing it in the back and bringing it back out.
It didn't pass.
You don't have to make, you don't have to make a motion to waive the rules if you're just amending it at the table with a written amendment.
A written amendment is wrong, so she can't amend it because the amendment's wrong. She has to have it written.
It has to be written.
Has to be written, and it has to be correct.
And his clerk's staff is back there changing it.
You also have a def... You have a second amendment if you want to move on to that.
Do you want to... Sure.
For a different bill. Which is 1862, also on my committee. That's enough.
I'm not...
And I have this amendment here, too. Did we get this one?
No, that's what I'm saying. She can move on.
So I'm gonna... Can I make? I'm gonna make a motion to amend bill 2019. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Harris, could you make a motion to amend bill 1862?
So moved.
Thank you. And all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any discussion on the amended bill? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Louise, for doing this for me.
Thank you, Louise.
From the clerk's office. Ready? Okay, Councilwoman Harris, you have a motion to amend?
Yes, I have a motion to amend 1702. That was requested just at the public hearing that we just had to move from January 1, 2020, which I know has been moved before. But I think we can really help some people with jobs. And I would ask that we move it to March 31st, 2020. That's my motion.
So do we have a second? Is there a second?
I guess not.
Seeing there's not a second, I apologize. The motion fails.
It's okay. Okay, so that amendment dies.
Okay, and do we have any other further amendments for the bills on there? No. Seeing none, the bills... Is there any further discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final passage. Please vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote nay. Those abstentions will register... Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing the legally required number of votes have... The bills have finally passed. Councilman Daniel Lavelle for Committee on Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents bill number 1916, reported to the Committee on Public Safety Services for July 24, 2019 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1869, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of specialty vehicle solutions in an amount of $40,505.10 for the upfitting of a vehicle for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Bill number 1870, resolution amending resolution number 133, authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into a three-year professional services agreement with Johnson Control for security camera integration and support services to defined funding sources. Bill number 1912, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into a two-year professional services agreement with one option to renew the center that cares for the purpose of implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Violence Intervention Street Outreach Program. Total cost $637,500.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? The bill is now ready. Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Those all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kelsmith, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing the bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith, myself, Committee on Public Works. Councilwoman Strasburger for me.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kelsmith presents bill number 1917, reported to the Committee on Public Works for July 24, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1882, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city and Renaissance III Architect for the professional architect services for Robert E. Williams Community Building Reconstruction and Design Document at a cost not to exceed $147,807. Bill number 1883, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public works to enter into a professional service agreement between the city and Rios William Architect, PC, for architectural and engineering design services for a series of restroom renovations in the city county building for a cost not to exceed $110,719.5. Bill number 1884, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public works to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission's Keystone Historic Preservation Construction Grant in an amount not to exceed $100,000. The city will supply the required matching funds in an amount of $420,000 for a total project of $520,000. Bill number 1885, resolution vacating a portion of Coldwell Street and portion of RWA in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill number 1886, resolution granting unto Zaiad Amando, his successor and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense in exterior wood trellis at the Alababa Restaurant in the 4th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill number 1887, resolution providing for a contract and/or agreement for purposes of receiving and expending grant funds, providing for the implementation of the Advanced Transportation and Congestion Management Technologies Development Project, and enter into additional agreement with any other relevant agencies as needed to accept grant funding offered to the city, said cost not to exceed $21,798,636. Bill number 1888, resolution providing for a contract and/or agreements, providing for the planning, design, repairs, maintenance, improvement, emergencies, operations, and/or the purchase of materials, equipment, and supplies in connection with the production of the Oakland Transportation Study and associated projects.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman Strasburger.
I'd like to make a motion to amend bill 2019, 1883 with a small amendment. It's simply, in consultation with DPW, Human Relations Commission, and Gender Equity Commission, and cosponsored by Council President Kraus, it would ask that as we look to refurbish, redesign our restrooms in the city county building that the city owns that we provide publicly accessible gender-inclusive and family accommodations in that consideration.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the... I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The abstentions? Bill's amended. Any discussion on the amended bill? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I'm supportive of the amendment. I think that was a really good point. And I didn't mention this last week because we have such a long agenda last week and this one as well. But just briefly, I also want to note that how overdue these renovations are for the public, and it just strikes me...
There's no air conditioning in the building right now.
There's a lot of deferred maintenance on this specific building, which is a public building. It needs to accommodate public needs. But also, it was one of the examples that I used as we were all negotiating the co-op agreement with Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, that the metering of this building, so all of this time, for 100 years, we have not been keeping track of how much water this building is using. And that meter will be putting in place. And it did cause some, you know, valid questions of people, well, how much will that cost? How much will the city have to pay for water? And my response has been consistently, look, you have to at least know how much you're using. You can't conserve unless you actually have a benchmark of knowing how much you're using. And I consistently said, as an example, for example, I don't see low-flow toilets in the women's restroom here, right? I don't see any water cons... Very common water conservation tools that we all have at our own homes. We are spending taxpayer money, one way or another, in all of our energy-water use in all of our public facilities because the citizens are either paying for that water on their water bill or paying for it on their tax bill. Either way, I think this will help us. This, these renovations, and also the co-op agreement and putting a meter to keep track of water use in this building will help us at least benchmark where we're at so that we can do better. So thank you for the opportunity to just point that out.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kelsmith, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received the legally number of votes required to pass have finally passed. Councilwoman Deb Gross for Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents bill number 1919, reported to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July 24, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1865, resolution directing the Department of Permits, License, and Inspections and the Department of Finance to establish guidelines to ensure that all contractors on publicly owned projects are properly licensed. Bill number 1889, resolution amending resolution number 440, so as to perform reprogramming within city council from D2 DEK Hockey in Southwest Pittsburgh CDC to Birmingham Foundation Westside Mustang, $6,000. Bill number 1890, resolution amending resolution number 441, so as to reprogram funding within city council from D2 DEK Hockey in Southwest Pittsburgh CDC to Birmingham Foundation Westside Mustang, $6,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman O'Connor.
Just briefly, I wasn't here last week. I want to thank Councilwoman Smith for cosponsoring and getting the bill through last week. And then also, I don't know if it's this committee or the next one, but congratulations to Councilwoman Gross on her inclusionary zoning. I wasn't here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Councilwoman...
No, I just wanted to say 1865, I know Tommy and Joel were here from the trades. I think it's a really good thing to protect our workers out in the field and, you know, keep, keep that good-paying jobs in for the people who live in our neighborhoods.
Thank you. And I want to thank Councilman O'Connor for bringing this and giving me the opportunity to cosponsor. And I also want to thank Steve Mazza and all those who worked with you on this. I'm very happy to be a cosponsor. I'm very happy to support today. And when I see stuff about PLI, I just want to say, I think I have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. I did call for a post-agenda we're going to schedule in September for PLI. And one of the things I said to Councilman, or to Chief of Staff Gilman, is I'd like to see PLI under maybe city council like they do in New York. All the permits are under the clerk's office instead of over the administration. I just have concerns with the way that they're running, the way they're operating. I think that, you know, I think having to answer to somebody other than people who think that, you know, I would say that I think people are doing the best they can to hold that department accountable, but they have a lot of concerns because, as you know, we've had a lot of issues in that area. So I'll say look forward to after that post-agenda, the conversation that we'll have about where PLI should go and whether or not it should be under city council or in the clerk's office, or whether we should have some more accountability so that the director is responding and answering to council members' concerns, and especially our constituents' concerns. Every one of us are receiving phone calls regarding, that I know of, regarding PLI and some of the permits and some of the delays in permits and some of them. Sometimes, I want to be honest, it is maybe on the people that are applying aren't giving us the total full story or accurate story, or may not be doing some things. But I have not recalled of receiving this many complaints in terms of permits. I've received complaints in terms of inspections, but never in terms of permits to this degree. And it may be because we're having more development, but that will all come out, and I think in the post-agenda. Councilman Coghill.
I just wanted to thank you for your leadership on that. You know, I look forward to that conversation as well. It's been ongoing, and, you know, even talking to Tommy and Joel here today, I said, you know, the problem, I feel like on their part, might be PLI, you know, structuring this in a way that needs to be done. I'm confident it'll pass now. But, so, that's great. I'm glad to hear you're throwing that together.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for yours, too, as well. Thank you. Councilwoman Harris.
Yeah, I want to thank Cory and you two for cosponsoring. I'd like to also cosponsor. But what I'd like to say is that I would have thought, over all these years, that the publicly owned projects were properly licensed. I can't believe they weren't. Unbelievable.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments?
Thanks, Cory.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, the bills having, or, I'm sorry, the bills are not ready for passage. The bills, please vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kelsmith, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Thank you, everyone. And now we'll move on to Councilman Coghill, the Committee on Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents bill number 1920, reported to the Committee on Urban Recreation for July 24, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation, resolution naming the basketball court located at the Olympia Park as the Biel Masusi Basketball Court.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill will move on for... The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kelsmith, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. Councilman O'Connor, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Did I miss something? Oh, did I miss you, Erica? You know why? Because I went ahead of myself and turned the page. I apologize. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We really should go down this way.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents bill number 1921, reported to the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for July 24, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1891, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Shared Street in order to receive access to the visualization platform suite, which would further the city's ability to deliver mobility services to residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill is having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. I don't have it here. Page 10. I don't have it here. I have Councilman O'Connor. Yeah, I don't know if I have it, page 10. No, I have Urban Recreation on page 10. I don't have that. Is there, is there something there for that committee?
Wait till the end. Wait till the end.
So, we'll move on to Councilman O'Connor's bill. Apparently, my page has something different than all of your pages, so, Councilman Cory O'Connor, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. It's not a big deal. We'll just get back to it. Don't worry about it.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 1922, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for July 24, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1871, Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 7502 Thomas Boulevard. Bill number 1872, Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Commonwealth Building. Bill number 1873, Resolution to amend Resolution 648 and to authorize the city to alternatively execute and record a declaration of condominium along with the housing authority of the city and the URA as declarence at the property located at 412 Boulevard of the Allies, and further authorizing the execution and filing as may be required of all related instruments or documents necessary. Enter into a tendency in common agreement or to convert the property into units and to ensure compliance with the Pennsylvania Uniform Condominium Act or the Pennsylvania Plan Community Development Act, or enter in a lease agreement with the city as landlord in either or both, the URA and HACPS tenants, in the event they do not fulfill their obligations in considerations of their respective ownership interests in the property, and further authorizing the city to organize and operate or otherwise participate in an owner organization to be organized in compliance with applicable law. Bill number 1875, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the URA in order for the city to receive $20,000, a beautification project of artist design and city-owned curb extensions on Broadway Avenue in the Beachview neighborhood. Bill number 1876, Resolution authorizing a 2019-2020 Corporation Agreement with the URA, providing for the designation of the local match and share for a grant applied to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Program for the Small Landlord Program. Bill number 1877, Resolution authorizing a 2019-2020 Corporation Agreement with the URA, providing for the designation of the local match and share for a grant applied to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Program for a housing accessibility program. Bill number 1878, Resolution authorizing the URA to submit a application for a housing accessibility program in the amount of $250,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the operation and administration of certain programs and projects in FY 2019-2020. Bill number 1879, Resolution authorizing the URA to submit an application for financial assistance for the Small Landlord Program in an amount of $250,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the operation and administration of certain programs and projects in FY 2019-2020. Bill number 1880, Resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interest, if any, into the publicly-owned properties in the 15th Ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, 126 and 130 Hazelwood Avenue. Bill number 1881, Resolution providing an execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land, buying between the URA and Northside Properties RNS LLC, 1016 Morrison Avenue, 903 929 949 Law Street, 921 California Avenue, and Brexton Police.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills? Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no further discussion, when we want, the bill is now ready for, the bills are now ready for final action.
Oh, I just, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, on 1873, I have been voting no on the Boulevard of the Allies, so I want to be consistent and vote no on this one, too.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, I just want to say that about the amendments on the 420 Boulevard of the Allies, I think it's wise for us to do this condominiumization, basically, right? So that each, the housing authority and the Urban redevelopment authority will more, they're being responsible for their own space, and the cost of those spaces will be built into, baked into the tri-party agreement on the building, and I, it's required, I think, by Housing and Urban Development for the housing authority to have this agreement in place, so that these changes are needed in order that we're assured the other authorities will bear their costs. And so I think it's actually beneficial to the taxpayer, and then additionally, that there's this tendency in common agreement so that, you know, the roof or the common areas are jointly paid for as all. So, while I voted against the funding for the building and the purchase of the building, because my concern was both that I thought it was an unnecessary expenditure, but then also that there'd be a better, stronger agreement so that the city doesn't end up carrying unnecessary costs for the authorities' needs. I'll be voting yesterday on this because I think it's consistent with that goal.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? So, I just want to say, similar to your comments, Councilwoman Gross, I voted against it, and I'll vote today to make sure that we're protecting the taxpayers' money, but I do have my, still have a lot of concerns about the building. And I want to thank Councilman Coghill for his work on Broadway Avenue in Beachview. He has done a tremendous amount of work, and, you know, oftentimes we hear how much things are going to the East End. On our side of town, that's all we ever hear is southwest of the river, you know, is, in parts of the North Side don't receive what the East End receives. And this time, you are receiving a ton of money in that area, and we're also starting to receive money in our, on our western part of the area with a ribbon cutting we just did down in Sheridan Park with a $6 million project, and that was thanks to Congressman Doyle and his help, and also our state elected officials. I just want to say, our state senator, I think that there's been a lot of times where we hadn't received money, but we are starting to receive money, and I think some of that is the administration also willing to be supportive of some of these, these project and projects, and so we're starting to see that money come into our side of town. But I really want to say, you advocated so strongly for that. That was one of your priorities with Beachview, was one of your very strong priorities when you came in, and I won't forget that, how hard you were advocating for that area. And sometimes when you see money going to other sides of town, it's because they're united, and it's because they, they do a lot of things to bring their voice together as one voice, and I think that you are trying to do that in a very challenging area in the city. I mean, a beautiful part of the city, an amazing asset to the city, but it's also a challenge at times to bring everyone together on the same page, and, I mean, for something of this magnitude, I think will really have a strong impact and a positive impact on that area. Seeing the beginning of money and investment in that area speaks volumes more than the actual project itself, just seeing the money coming into that area now. So, I just want to congratulate you on your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
I don't know bills, except for 1873, I'll be voting no.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
On Bill 1873, eyes eight, one no, all other bills, eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing the bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And now we'll move on to Councilwoman Harris, Darlene Harris, Committee on Human Resources. Councilwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill number 1918, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for July 24, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1867, Resolution requesting authorization for the mayor and the manager of the Office of Municipal Investigations to enter into an agreement with Assured Polygraph Services for an amount not to exceed $24,000. Bill number 1868, Resolution providing for an agreement with the Create Lab at Carnegie Mellon University in an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills? Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. Passage, those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Seeing the bills have received the legally required number of votes, they are finally passed. And that brings us on to motions and resolutions, and I want to thank council members for helping me get through this meeting with no air conditioning, and...
It's hotter out there.
We need to wait, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Burgess, I know we have something.
Yes, at the request of the administration, OMB is asking to have an interdepartmental transfer proceeded for them for, at this meeting, rather than the next standing committee meeting, which will not be till after recesses, recess, the funds are needed for a multimodal grant application that's actually due this week, and the second one to correct an error in the financial system as to not hamper approved spending in the IOP account over the next month. So, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council and move to the immediate consideration of these two transfer items.
Do we have any, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the amended bill?
It should be a written amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion.
Yeah.
It should be a written, is it in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we have one in front of us.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I'd say it was like a new bill.
They are, yes, they're two, they're, can I, can I explain? And the transfers would have normally came on the last standing committee, and we would have voted on Wednesday. That's when we do that, but, so, but there's no meeting next Wednesday, and you'll have to wait until after recess, so we can consider it now and vote for it and approve it right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
So, just to point out that the amount from OMB to administrative fees, to, from administrative fees to grants is only $1,000, and it's needed to cover the costs associated with applying for the grant, so I'm totally supportive. I mean, that's, you know, I wish they would have realized what their timing was if the grant deadline was this week. Maybe they didn't realize there were fees associated with the grant deadline. And then the second one is Department of Innovation and Performance, it says $10,000 from workforce training to operational supplies. I don't really understand what operational supplies are, but considering that it's just a transfer within a department from one budget line to another, I'm supportive as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? So, we have a motion to amend, or a second? Do we have a second? A motion to waive rules, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so the bill was amended, and any discussion on the final amendment? Okay, so, it's finally approved?
I think, I think we've, we've, the motion was to waive the rules of council, which it did.
Oh, I apologize.
Now, I need a motion to approve the two transfers. So, motion to approve the two transfers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're not having discussion. I'm done.
[laughing].
Councilwoman Harris, we have, meaning, do you really have some discussion?
Yeah.